Also, the deputy chief of the training academy, which is me. Okay, Deputy Chief Papiano. Her question, in case people didn't hear. Her first question was, "What about the training academy?" Okay, the training that was going on in that facility? We have vacated the building. However, stop, stop. Training will continue over at the new academy. For security, the Chicago Police Department will put 24...
Train!
The Chicago Police Department will put 24/7... 24/7 officers at that location. Furthermore, 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 we are increasing camera coverage in addition. But, we also want to work, as Jonathan said, we want to work with you to see what other measures you would like there. And you tell me, sir. I want to give you my information. I want to give you my information, so that you, again, if you have other ideas, work the board.
Hey, excuse me, sir. When do you get in line where you can ask a question?
Not just yet. We're trying to get through this line of people, so the line won't get overcrowded.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Excuse her. I have a little authority to interrogate you, so a lot about what's going on. Please admit how the respect that she deserves right now. But I have no question.
This is in Chicago, Illinois. What's wrong, man? You just gotta press "R" at the bottom for YouTube, right? What's wrong, man?
My heart goes out to them, first and foremost, I'll just say that. I do not agree for them to come to our community. I am whole, mate, speaking. And that is not my choice. You have to do background checks on your individual assets.
Yeah.
We are to our community. Has there been background checks?
No, 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 no! This is about Sanctuary City in Chicago. A lot of people don't like it. Our tax money is funding people that don't even... That snuck into the country. It's illegal.
So please, somebody answer the question, ma. Because we are, we understand why we feel like our property values will be taken. You know what she just said? She said that we're moving. People want to move into...
I don't want a man to go to a concentration camp. Do a female teacher. That's right. Is that Perry Smalls? You look like Perry... I'm sorry. It's a lady on WBON. I'm sorry.
And so, what happens is because we receive people in such a large amount, we have to look at city assets, city spaces, to be able to create shelter. So you can see this screen, ma. I can see it. Uh, it has a different location. The red dogs are the city shelters, and the purple are us. They're all on the one side. So, these jumps of patients, I know lots of folks have lots of empty, trying to explain. You know, lots of folks have identified as large empty spaces. There's various...
Send them to the little village. Why they not going to the Latino community? Yeah. If it's so safe, why they ain't going to the Latino community? Hey, man, what can... Why they ain't going to the Mexican community? What can we go up there and ask?
Your question was about background checks. These folks, please, who went and received most recently are families. So these are asylum seekers.
Ah, damn, man. Yeah. New background checks. New people, cocktail. Hey, man, that tax money ain't supposed to be for them anyway. Like the Mexico. Put them in the neighborhood, man. Put them in the Mexican neighborhood. Yeah, yeah. You be like, next to you. A lot of them people in North Carolina, Texas, they gonna be in North Carolina. Shrek!
So when they come here, they also come to meet certain behaviors, because if they want to be able to like or study, they cannot have no records.
Man, I gotta push, damn, man. The rules don't apply to them. Maybe y'all gonna throw the wall if you make a splash.
Can't get in line yet, son.
Question, man. You got your big man. Go get your child. Okay, yeah, man.
I just want to see the state. I work, I'm not gonna say anything, ma. For a place where we have a few migrants, well, it's more than a few.
Illegal immigrants.
I'm not trying to stop a crime.
I mean, nice. Illegal!
We have to... It's constant security, even higher.
Always, man.
It's going to happen. What is what? I know you said you're bringing policemen, 24/7. I don't think you're...
Man, my phone ain't even fully charged, I can't believe this.
Because I think what happens to where I am.
You never...
Some fights are state officials. And I know we have gangs in the community here in Chicago, over here where we are, I prefer that they might fight among themselves. Because the gangs here, over here, they can't control them.
That's right. Right, 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 right! That's right. Control that MS-13. She right. She right, baby. She right. Hey, man.
Don't trust the gay hill. Don't trust the gay hill.
Can't even control the gangs over here. You right. I didn't think about that.
And they bringing in MS-13, let the wall cross the border.
Yeah. This is a meeting in Chicago about Sanctuary City, when people come in from Mexico, Central America.
A lot of comments are made about safety. I have anxiety about the safety or lack thereof on our block, our community. Six homes were broken and took on our block within a two week period in an afternoon during the surge.
How you doing, sir?
That's hot.
That's this too.
Get on the mic. You can get on the mic, so I gotta go back here.
They can't find or they can't see anything.
You know what? You look just like the lady on the... Anybody else tell you that? WBON.
Every day, police cars parked on the wrong side of the street. They add to the police officers who are not immune. They are not light to hiding. They're not coming on call. They're just being very, very scared of bad news.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
24 hours of surveillance of police presence. Seriously, two weeks ago, my mother and I, where a young man walking down our street, pulled the gun on us.
I love you.
Police officer who was at the school said, "Oh, I'm not doing anything."
Yeah.
You see the gun. So we run in the school. She calls, I call, my mother calls, said, "We can't come out right now because we have prior crime going on." The anxiety that I have coming out of my door.
Folks, I ain't saying... Yeah. You bringing the cocktail up there.
Did you get feedback, whatever criteria that you have?
Bringing all that dope up in here with MS-13.
Allowing people to qualify to be in a asylum, asylum unit.
Some of them people got...
Where are these resources coming from?
Yeah, yeah, yeah!
All of a sudden.
Yeah!
All of a sudden, you got the money.
Yeah! Oh, get it, man! Yeah! Yeah!
Now they got the money, now.
I is not embarrassed in asking her question. I have to... I understand what you mean. Well, you start with yourself. You start with your own.
Yeah! That's right, that's right.
You not hearing these resources, what was going on right here, right there?
That's correct.
They were stealing car while the police were at the academy. Looking out the window, just getting... Having a cup of coffee. She walks to the back, come, getting crazy. They're stealing her car. Within 20 minutes, they attempted to steal another neighbor's car. He was sitting in his car with his seat pushed back. They didn't see him. They pulled a gun on him. The police come, they're interrogating the neighbor who was sitting in his car with ID. Nothing happened. My husband was walking our dog. They went to the lockers behind the school over here from 7...
Oh, why that train truck?
They were trying to steal the police car.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Really?
What did you train them for?
Like 110.
What would you train them for?
I don't recognize people that's coming out the door. So, I don't...
God, these people living under these... That's right, brother. Don't make no sense. Yeah, baby, go ahead. Teach you, baby. I love... You wanna hear what the police got to say?
Lane, you can hear us with the question, ma, sir.
Yeah, this is security.
We're gonna need...
I'm telling you that's police.
Here, John?
I have people looking after the meeting to discuss the violence.
They are here to dummy you down.
Yeah, yeah. Dummy you down.
We have men with trans sedentary. They're going to pick up their efforts and then go and...
They could go wash their hands, man.
Man.
Don't worry about no damn garbage. You wanna hear about MS-13?
Shit, they ain't gonna do nothing, though. Keep it way out, man. You know what I don't understand? How you gonna give money to somebody that don't even have a... I don't, I don't get it, man.
So, to be able to trust a specific incident, we, uh...
You hear that wall?
Yeah.
However, we're constantly monitoring what's going on in this area. We are constantly putting more and more resources. We have CST teams, which are extra resources. We're moving our tactiles around the district. We've also, we've also listened to help of IDOC. We've been listening to help of Cook County. This area is seeing more offensive resources than anybody else in my district.
What y'all want me to do, shit? Huh? What y'all want me to do?
Man, he only even live in the hood.
So, we have multiple things going on right now. We've done more prosecutions on PSN than anywhere else in the city. Unfortunately, a lot of these solutions do not happen overnight. It's been years since I came here. Slowly or surely, for instance, we have done one gun, one robbery, one assault on the street.
All these people, we last question.
Plus successes we get, but it's not gonna help because you don't feel safe.
Hey, man. Stop, Mount Sanctuary City in Chicago.
My name is Patricia Key. I was with my neighbor at the justice court when that happened with the dumb guy that was stalking our neighbor. Um, he didn't pull a gun out, and I was shocked.
How do I get to ask a question?
They were told that they could tell the two other children, that they had to dress first. And this happened during a change of shift, so you have extra time on duty at the same time. So I don't understand why my life was felt in danger because of this kid.
Hey, man, how do we get to... Excuse me, brother, hey. Hey, excuse me. How do we get the opportunity for you to ask a question?
We gotta demand it. Or you go outside and prank it up.
No, I'm talking about...
I know. They say they some of them...
Salma Lekim, honey, they... The ground.
So, when they do this, what, uh, what is your plan? When you've been living here for decades, the city of Chicago has pleaded the South Shore community and pleaded...
Illegal immigrants.
And what's your plan to, to help, uh, situate them, situate them while we remain safe?
Y'all that wanna speak, off of down and get a line. Yeah. I'm sorry about that. You got a question, too, man? This is wrong. This is wrong. Any of y'all wanna talk, you can get in line right here. Told them I wanna talk. Get in line, come on.
We live on the block, let us go first.
Get in line, come on, man, get in line. We keep living this neighborhood, you live over here. Just talk to people, man. Ask the people, let it be you. They just be loud, ain't no... I ain't your motherfucker, get in line. Get in line, come on, get in line. You got something?
Yeah, questions, man.
You got questions? You got questions? I got a question, man.
And those who arrived, ladies and gentlemen, you bring out your screens for everyone involved, especially children. Because on the trend of two, the United States is gonna be up to two months, three months.
You got something to say? Hey, we don't want, hey, brother. Please, give me a call one day, please. This is wrong, brother. This is wrong. You standing me down like that goes to moon, son. Hey, man, can I ask you, why y'all don't wanna sit in line? How come y'all don't wanna sit in line to ask questions?
We can't hear.
Why? How come y'all don't wanna sit in line to ask questions?
We just don't wanna crowd this area.
I mean!
It's a lot of people.
It don't gotta be no cheese. I'm gonna take any hint. Aw, man.
We just, we just try to, we don't wanna crowd this area.
Yeah, we in line. No, we got questions, man. Let's just leave it at that, okay? Tell your man, we're bad, I tell you. We gonna get out there. We keep getting, I'm gonna make you speak with us. Hey, man. Hey, thanks, man. Thanks, man.
Hello, I'm Lisa Washington. I'm the supervisor chair for the Southeast Region Training Development. And there was a question regarding resources. I can talk about the total investment that the city has made with developers within just the South Shore community. There has been a total of $127 million that would be seen in the next couple of years. It has been approved for different developments.
Hey, you know what? Every time I come, ah, you know what? I wanna do a show with you, brother.
That $127 million, it includes recipients who receive grants from NOF.
No, I don't.
Our Chicago Temper grant, do the best out West corridors, release RFPs, and we're working on those deals. Some of the prominent projects that maybe we're up, we need a drive-in. On their phase one, we should have a ground breaking, ground breaking by the individual. We also have heard about...
That's what I've been trying to tell y'all. This is what I'm gonna do, across the street. That's what I'm supposed to do. The neighbors got a little...
Thank you, brother. Thank you.
I hear you, son. I hear you.
Like to speak to you.
No, I'm not saying that they don't like to speak. I'm not saying that they don't.
I'll give you a floor. I'm just trying to share with you that there has been, many of you have been a part of the round table discussion.
We have yet to be there with a collective question. We just trying to get the folks over there directly across the street. We trying to prioritize their questions, until they all want to...
And I live in the community. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir. You know what I'm understanding? How you gonna give somebody some money that snuck into the country? Yeah!
How you let somebody get bussed all the way from Texas to Chicago, and you can't put them on that same bus and bring them back?
Hey, you shouldn't... Well, if you a Sanctuary City, you shouldn't even wanna send them back. Would you agree with that? I'm saying, I'm saying, if you classified as a Sanctuary City, it shouldn't make no difference anyway. Would you agree with that at this... I understand that, you know? I'm saying, this whole classification of Sanctuary City, Chicago shouldn't even be authentic. In my opinion.
No, they shouldn't, uh, but, uh, we have enough. We got enough, I don't know.
Cause that tax money, that tax money that we paying is supposed to be allocated for citizens that here, lots of people that snuck into the country. That's what, that's what I'm saying. We shouldn't even be classified as...
No, we should.
I think it would be very fair...
How many you think Chicago... You know, you got enough. We did it, so I'm okay leaving it alone.
Trying to handle it. Well, baby. Hey, don't she look like Perry Smalls? I'm sorry. The lady in black is like Perry Smalls. Man, I was, too bad my phone is out of juice. But you know what? I wanna get some cross advertisement, shit. You know a cross advertisement, yeah? Hey, you the only black, you the only black bookstore that's opening in Chicago. Good you holding on, brother. Salma Lekim, bro. But you know what's good? You holding on. Only black store, black business, black bookstore, brother. It is good.
The front end is dead now, they got a lot of them are dead. So, they not recognizing the time. This is the time, this is, we going to the population age right now.
Yeah.
Not only do we understand we have war, you don't understand we got... You don't know what it means, you don't know what it means, uh, how to fight that anymore. You don't really know your job.
Regentification is taking, taking place before our very eyes. Little lady over there. It's a lot of people... You know what I seen, man? That's a lot of people that got questions. Yes, ma. Oh, yeah. Yeah, this is open forum, though.
No, but it's a conflict event, because she not... She not black. I'm not trying to look at a brown, a brown, a black woman, but it's in the law. It's a reference, she is...
It's true, it's true. But the only reason I'm saying it, cause, but it is an open forum.
But, because the First Amendment does, but, but she is... She not here, she ain't nothing about, and that's why she come from the...
It's true. That's true. They finding all that money for all that. You are it.
That part, because we are complicated, because they are...
You right.
In order to be able to obtain your location, I'm trying to explain this to gentlemen. Please let me explain this to the answer to them. So because they come through and they're filing for immigration relief, they have to then apply for work authorization. And thus, take a long time, only if that the government, if it approves the work permit, we don't have authority to do that. What we do do is give them, know your rights information that we give to everyone, so that they're aware that even if they're working, they have to be paid, so that that is on drag down for wages for everyone else. That's very important as well. So maybe for the question.
The cops still helping us build a wall? Are you a cop, sir? You helping us build a wall?
My name is Rosie Inwone. Uh, I represent the 74th Fair and Club, just about two blocks away. My comments are in no way, and I am going to read because there's a really emotional thing that will come out. My comments are in no way about the asylum seekers, rather directly addressed to the unholy, their white foot, and city officials at this table, inclusive of all the persons in charge of making a recommendation to once again use a forgotten South Side community. Why do I represent as a forgotten South Side community? Community, because we do not hear from city officials until elections.
When I saw that lady, I thought it was Perry Smalls. I listen to her every day.
Quiet take to our doors on a late Tuesday evening, announcing a community meeting that...
That's just what you said, don't she be... Okay, you gonna say the letter. And then you don't even have a fucking thing. But your plan is to just walk copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, the version is accurate, it's okay. Yeah, he work for Lori, he works for Lori.
Yeah. No, but they had Sanctuary City before Lori. They had, they had Washington, you know, they had Sanctuary City.
It's a small building, man.
Well, they're definitely Perry Smalls. WBON. Of course, they don't move in at all. I don't know.
With non-attending for the taxpayers and citizens. Taxpaying property owners, seniors, and constituents living in our forgotten communities located on the South Side of Chicago. It is insulting that you would consider such action about a forgotten community that none of you live...
None of you! None of you! None of you!
It's insulting that you would consider such a serious transformation.
Disrespectful, too.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
They are requesting assistance from city officials, and it's insulting that you should accept.
That's right. American, great American.
I tell you, not the city officials may be above a priority pool, which has not been done, we shouldn't continue to create more challenges and the need for more resources to assist us.
Okay, I got to zoom on out, cause unfortunately, this is about Chicago and the people are in Sanctuary City.
The migrants at an average cost of $380 per house per day, according to the city budget directive, this is what.